We'll go ahead and call this meeting to an end. Once again, do you have a moment of silence where you can pray to yourself and draw a moment of silence or meditate? Just do so to yourself. Thank you. Y'all join me in the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we're gonna move on to public comments. We had three people sign up. First individual signed up was Mr. John Ray Nelson. And for George Faris, thank your name and your address for the record again. Are you okay, Mr. Dean?
Yeah. I think last week, as mentioned, it was hard to hear you. Everybody, you okay now? John Ray Nelson, third district, over the court. I thought Mr. Fury and, or what else would be here? You consider gifting him a three-month extension this week, but I looked at the agreement. I didn't see any consideration for the town. I think it's important to keep in mind that taxpayers are very caring about from on the outlet until that team closes. And if they're gonna ask for some kind of thing, it would've been preferable and useful if they would've offered a, or offered some form of consideration for people of Fletcher. Now, item five, the redistricting conversation. I've been calling the discussion. I wanted to offer just my perspective on that. The no way to manage racism is good. Good opinions on both sides. Our town's small enough that if we wanted to do a redistricts, it probably makes sense. But there's a good argument to be made that if there are four distinct areas in our town, the districts make sense as well. Not on offense. I ask because I only know this kind of districts or if it really doesn't make sense. But I can see the argument. But in this session, discussion for highlighting the purpose of, or the purpose of highlighting the problem, I think it's useful to engage in just a thought experiment. If you imagine our town with four districts as we have, a three are perfectly proportional and a fourth of just one home. Objectively, you can see, obviously, you can see there's a problem. The only concern is that everyone votes, you know, at large than a district of one home when met. But obviously, there's, there's other issues that rise there. So the question for us in Fletcher is where do we draw that line? Would a district of 10 homes, would 100 homes be acceptable? Probably. The school of government says that, you know, their, their threshold that they talk about is 5%. That may or may not be appropriate for the town of Fletcher. That's for you to all to decide. But if there is some threshold, you know, 10%, 15%, 20%, sure, looking to agree that districts pretty being 80.3% below the target and District One being 26.5 above the target beyond a reasonable threshold, that's worth considering.
Thank you for your comments. Next individual signed up is Ms. Gail Kemp. And go just thank your name and your address for the record again. Any further questions?
I'm Gail Kemp. I live at 27 South Chase Drive in Fletcher. And I want to speak tonight about the video that I saw online of a Fletcher father and husband being arrested, detained, and then ultimately dying at the hands of the Fletcher Police Department who were called to serve and protect by the welfare of this man. I have a lot of questions. And the first one I have is why don't officers in Fletcher have body cameras? While there are some privacy issues with those things, if the camera is on it, every citizen contact, they do serve two really big purposes. Number one, making a record to protect people from excessive use of force and other abuses by a power right of police officers. Then number two, to protect an officer who is accused of excessive use of force. Another question that I notice we have or have is what de-escalation techniques does the Fletcher Police Department use? I requested that by way of public record and received an use of force general order that office, quote, "officers should use nonviolent strategies and techniques to decrease the intensity of the situation." Are our officers trained in de-escalation techniques? I don't know. For example, verbal judo is very effective. I've been training it on lots of officers who have. And I think that's something that the public needs to know. Another question I had is the necessity for seven officers to subdue one subject. Especially when this 911 call informed of a potential use of something, probably drugs. Why weren't EMTs immediately called? General Order 2.03 on use of less lethal devices specifically warns officers that a person on drugs may suddenly die if the officer uses a taser. I understand that the chief statement, from the chief statement, that Mr. Hensley was fighting. I don't know what that means exactly. I, the video I saw, a man handcuffed behind his back, but officers were three or four officers on top of him. Specifically, the general orders call for no use of restriction for breathing or blood to the brain, to the head. And specifically not to use a taser when the subject is already subdued, as he was here. I have a lot of questions. I could go on and on, but I don't have time. I just request one thing from the police department and from the council is that there will be justice for Mr. Hensley and for the Fletcher PD officers. Justice for his widow and his children. If that means that this city, the town, has to pay out.
And that's the town.
Yeah, I know. It's really loud. It goes on and on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next individual signing up for public comment is Ms. Mitzi Reed.
Oh, that thing, I thought I was just supposed to sign here. Good thing you're right there, because I'm.
You guy get up and talk now. You started up.
We'll, we'll let you pass this, Tom. Is there anybody else?
Well, I do, I do have something honestly to say. Yeah.
But just say, just say your name and your address for the record. Still, I know.
Mitzi Reed, 84 St. John Road here in Fletcher. I've had several of community members reach out to me directly in regards to open fire, relit, or relifting the ban that is currently in place. I know I've had several members of the community have called and expressed their concern. They've been outside just doing like a small little campfire type thing. And then that has been the issue. They've had the fire department come out and talk to them and have to have that little fire come out. So that has been a question. So I don't know if that's something that, you know, y'all can revisit, looking at and seeing if there's a way that that can be the least of substance.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else that wishes to speak or post a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number one on our agenda, approve of the minutes. Counselor, any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, do you have a motion to approve the minutes as presented in your agenda papers?
Make a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is updates from counsel. I'll just say one update. And I'll say I'm very pleased to see the turnout at the park for the concert in the park series. Exceeded my expectations by far, so a lot of props to parks and rec staff for that. That's my one update. Any other updates from counsel?
Yes, I've got a couple. In our last Henderson County Transportation Advisory Committee, Bill Laffley mentioned that the county is in the process of purchasing 37 acres in the Furbin Cliff Industrial Park. And the reason they're buying that property is there's another 100 acres north of the industrial park. But that 100 acres is flat land that could be developed, but it doesn't have good water access. And it doesn't have any real good vehicular access. So by buying those 37 acres, they hope to open up those 100 acres and they're hoping to lure some kind of a major manufacturer, really large manufacturer there. I understand that the property, some or all of it, is owned by the airport. So they're talking about possible land swap or something like that. I'm sure we'll hear more about that in the future. The other thing was from Chuck McGrady. He mentioned that there is a proposal in the legislature to have taxes on vehicular products such as auto parts, oil, anything that's tied with vehicular vehicles. Have those taxes diverted to the DOT trust fund instead of the state general fund like they are right now. And their hopes, if that goes through, is that that will free up some more money that can be used for road projects within the state, which as most people probably realize with people not traveling as much and all the electrical vehicles and stuff, state is losing an awful lot of money that they used to get from gas taxes. And that's what pays to have the roads built in the state. So they're looking for some other ways to get tax revenue to build roads.
I have a question on that. Is that a proposal for new tax or is it a proposal to divert tax that's already on the products?
It's gonna divert tax that's already on the products.
Do you know the bill numbers?
Yeah.
I had just an update, a couple of things to mention. Went to Henderson County Economic Development meeting this past week. And there's just a lot of great things going on. Great plans from several committees, marketing, product development, workforce development, business development. And I can explain a little bit more in depth for each one of them. But it's just a massive plan that they've got going on. And I'm just really honored to be a part of that board and would love that. They, they're also having, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. It wound up being that almost all the meetings that are coming up now through June 28th, well, April 26th was the last one, are in Fletcher. So that's really neat. And I volunteered to host in our multipurpose room, February 22nd at 3:30. So, but when I did that, when they asked for volunteers for that, I didn't know that we already had all of these lined up. It'll be at Reinhard, Apple Pack, this high vis, Allegiant, Light and Camus Friends. And so Fletcher's gonna be showcased in a wonderful way throughout the year, it appears. And then one issue closer to home. A resident wrote me and she might've reached out to Sonny as well in regards to Rutledge Road, the duck crossing issue. She's pretty upset that she's, she's had a situation where she hit a duck and she says she just sees ducks being hit. And she thinks that the signage is not quite enough. And she was wondering if we could have like a flasher or something approaching, you know, that area where the lake is. And it's just a busy road and it's going to get worse with the two new developments going up. So she asked what I'm, please put out a request that we bring storm and see if we can come up with some lighting somehow to possibly add more than just a sign of duck crossing because no one seems to be slowing down in that area at all. That's all I have.
Any more objections, counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided in agenda papers?
Still moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have the motion approved. Next item on agenda is item number four. We have Mr. Executive Director from the Hassel Regional Airport on his annual presentation. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. It's my annual state of the airport address for 2021. You may have seen this electronically, but also passed it out, our copy, the annual operational report. You can find some pleasure reading it. Overall, from 2021, our air service, we have five carriers operating at the airport. Allegiant, American, Delta, Sun Country, and United. We had 25 nonstop destinations out of the airport at the end of 2021, which is the highest number we've ever had. I'm not gonna read all the destinations. For some of the new destinations that we had ins, uh, additionated in 2021 was Washington National Airport, Key West Florida, Destin, Florida, Las Vegas, and Minneapolis, to name a few that were new for last year. Our passenger numbers for last year in 2021, we had a total of 1,428,266, which was up 102% over 2020. Obviously, we were still in COVID at that time. A little below our 2019 numbers, which was our high watermark. Seats in the market, we had 991,152 seats, which was up 58.7% over the prior year. Operationally, the airlines, we had 26,691 aircraft operations commercially, which was up 58.3%. General aviation and military, we had 49,047, which was up 18.6%. From a standpoint of destruction, we opened a new, the new remote shuttle on the other side of, the east side of Airport Road. Cost on that was roughly $1.8 million. We also worked on the south commercial ramp expansion. That was approximately $9.5 million, which we opened late in the year of 2021. We also worked and worked on the new terminal design and the new air traffic design. Both of those were in process at the end of 2021. From a community standpoint, we did hold our runway 5K. First one we've had in eight years because we hadn't been able to do it because of the runway project. We had over 1,000 runners. We raised over $15,000. That was split between AVT, Aviation Fund and the Western North Carolina Pilots Association Scholarship Fund. We brought back local artists and musicians back after hiatus for COVID. And we also started an ABL welcome group. So it's a test basis, trial basis, with some folks that have some mental disabilities that are there that can function. And they love aviation and they're welcoming guests on an occasional basis at the airport as people are flying in. Financially, from an operational revenue standpoint, we had $12.2 million. Expenses were $8.7 million, so we netted $3.4 million and change. Our assets come to the end of the year, was $205,981,000. That was an increase of $36.9 million over 2020. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have for me this evening. Thank you.
Questions from counsel?
How is the plan coming for the interim?
Plan is almost done. We have let, we're doing it with a same at risk, our construction manager at risk program. We're broken that, we've broken that up into three components. The first one is already underway. You can see some of that construction going on as you're coming up Airport Road past the airport. That's basically the start of it. That's part of that. And we're moving the Airfield Electrical Walkroom. What you see along Airport Road is the contractor trailer staging area and some of the lay down yard for construction. We just awarded a contract on Friday for component package number two, which was just under $80 million. That includes a new central energy plant and a lot of long lead time items such as loading bridges, baggage handling systems, and HVAC equipment because of what we're experiencing in supply chain issues. The remaining, the actual terminal itself will go out to bid probably in August, sometime September at the latest. With hopefully award being done in October through December timeframe, construction starting shortly thereafter.
Thank you. How does, one of the things, how does this airport, I know at one time, year or two ago, it was the fourth fastest growing airport. Is it still up to top end of the list?
We are, we're fortunate. We are, as you know, Fletcher, Asheville, Western North Carolina is a tourist destination. We, we fared very well during COVID. The numbers that we're seeing passion wise right now from, I would say, February or March to current, we're seeing higher numbers than we did in 2019. So if that continues throughout the rest of the year, then we'll set new records this year in 2021. So from that aspect, there are a few other airports during COVID that really boosted, like, for example, Sarasota, Florida got new air service by New Airlines. Their traffic went through the roof. But we are very highly recognized as one of the still leading growing airports within the country.
More questions or comments from counsel? This is next to cover. Thank you for all the.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Happy new year.
Moving on to item number five, was a discussion on staff report regarding a mandatory electoral district loss. Wanted to know anything different from the staff perspective. Mark, if you wanted to play a bit better, I want to do the.
Just, again, this was an informational report. It's a follow-up to a request or question about, you know, what is the process for redistricting? And it basically, per our charter, that process is, it's at the discretion of counsel. There is a general statute in reference that talks about when you have an annexation or a census update, that those are two times that it's suggested that you revisit it. You definitely have to on an annexation. We've done that. We haven't had an annexation that affects residential in quite some time. But really, that's the only time that it's happened in Fletcher since you incorporated in 1989. And then you operate under a residential election district versus a true electoral. And the residential, basically, again, I guess for anyone interested in the audience, obviously, the candidate or the council member has to reside in the district. However, they're elected at large, so all the eligible voters elect that council member. As opposed to a true electoral district, the council member has to reside there and they're only elected by the people that live in that district only and not at large or townwide, if you will. So, yeah, having said that, and this was just some additional comparison clarification information we received from the school of government. So you, since y'all operate under the residential district, you're not required to do this. It's totally, again, in your discretion. They did, however, provide some guidelines for reviewing it. And this is something that I believe it's a test that the true electoral district has to go to, go through. But it's some guidelines for how to consider it for, you know, your residential districts. And that's basically taking the average, which is, well, they call it ideal population, which is the average population of the districts, and, and then looking at that lowest populated district. And if it's 5% less than that, then you're starting to head into the population out of balance, basically. And then the highest populated district, if it's over 5% of that average figure, same thing. And, and it's not to say you have to have something that perfectly comes within or within a margin of 10%. It's just a guideline for it. And I provided you all the numbers and it's in the report. So I got some help from the GIS department with Henderson County. And we plugged the figures in and see you've got that five or four districts. And your average is at just below 2,000. And the lowest populated District Three was at 1,001,06. Highest populated was District One, 2,524. In the census, I'll just comment, just one brief comment. We, I think we were disappointed with response rates on the census. And so, you know, do try and factor, or I would advise you factor that into it as well since the numbers are probably low. Because we were at 8,500 residents is our official count a couple of years ago. And then it dropped half a year to 8,000. And we just know based on the amount of residential construction activity and other things that we've observed and see hap, so basically see happening, that we should be increasing and not decreasing the population. So, but that, that's it. And I'm sorry if I gave more detail than needed this last week. But again, you've, you've got the numbers. You don't have to redistrict, but if you want to revisit this at another time or now, you've, you've got some data to work with.
Yeah, well, I'll say my perspective is that we should have redistricted. Should we look at these laws? I think there are particular issues that are in comparison for candidates. District Three has over 1,000 residents in comparison to District One that has 2,500 residents. I don't think it's harming anybody or reducing the individuals in District One and increasing them in District Three. But each district, from my perspective, should have fairness in terms of candidates to make sure that each district has at least that 2,000, that 2,000 person average. When we look at it in terms of, if each district were to have 10 houses, besides one district that have four, there's a clear problem there from my perspective. So my position on this issue hasn't changed. Anything with counsel?
Do we know how many residents live in the Breton Village? Little small area in there?
I don't know the figure on that. We'd have to, probably count the units and do an average or maybe the ownership could give us the number. But if you want us to find out.
I'm curious to see if that was even an option for me.
I do think we could try and rebalance it a little bit. And I think part of that process of rebalancing, if we have any major subdivisions that are under construction, we should try to estimate how those, like those subdivisions are gonna affect the balance when we do this. It's my opinion.
I think we should try and do this now, in time for the next election. And then going forward, look at this after the census, each 10 years, or 10 year census call. That's my perspective. But seeing, not sure, counsel perspective's changed. I think we're also, council member listening, I think we need to hear his opinion as well. Anything else with counsel on that? Seeing none, I will, I'll talk about this again out of turn. Counselor, relax and attend.
Yeah, just let me know if you need information just back on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item on agenda is item number six, based on the purchase and sale agreement for the town center. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So when I first had this in the packet for you last week, we had a resolution authorizing myself and Mayor to negotiate an extension. Since then, and I told you a little bit at the agenda review meeting, the attorney that worked with us in developing the original purchase and sale agreement and economic development agreement, worked on at least a specific extension to get you through with them, our developer partner, through the end of August. And, you know, by that. And, you know, by that short of a period, there's some discussions with DOT that are ongoing right now relative to the traffic transportation improvements, and that's what's holding this up, that just our developers had a bit of a curve ball from it. When they presented their recommendations from the traffic impact analysis, and DOT shared additional transportation improvement options that were bigger picture down the road type of improvements. So you all weighed in on it, developers shared that feedback with DOT. We're going to be meeting with DOT on Thursday, and we're hoping we'll get some direction from them about the feedback that you all have, and also, I think I shared last week, if the developer feels they can get the driveway permits, driveway permit permits approved, or they could get forward, be approved in a relatively short period of time, then they'd be more comfortable moving to a closing much faster. If DOT's holding that up for whatever reason, then they'll probably, you know, be looking for, or at least asking for a longer extension. So I mean, we're hopeful, at least from a staff perspective, that they'll approve the driveway permits so we can move forward toward closing on this.
I just don't think that DOT is going to approve a driveway permit until the town agrees on what they want to do with the intersection up there. I mean, DOT is sitting on property that they don't want to sell back to the developer and then later on have to buy back when the decision is made on that intersection. So if we can't come, if we can't agree on how to handle the intersection, I don't see this whole process moving forward.
Well, you shared your feedback, and we're waiting to get a reaction from DOT on that, so I know Will Louie's summarized that and shared that back with them. The other thing is, if they don't give a clear direction and developer wants to move forward without that residual DOT right of way, which they're, you know, they think's important, maybe there's a way to work around it. So that's another way to potentially do most of what we're trying to do there.
I think he has the right approach. We had a short conversation at the economic development meeting, he spoke about approaching it as a twofold approach with DOT, you know, here's the short term fix and the long term fix. And the short term fix will allow Lewis and the Lido's to move forward. So the way this is explained, me, I'll be thrilled to do it. So I know that that desire is there, they don't want to handle it even more than we do, and that's expressed from local, though I don't, a little bit of those.
And just to go upon that, Mark and I met with him two weeks ago, I believe, and I got that same sentiment from him that you expressed. Anything else with council? Seeing none, we have approved the suspension agreement of the resolution, correct?
Yes.
I would recommend to approve the resolution authorizing extension purchases, that would be enough of a council objection.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
Or a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Vote aye. Vote aye. Motion carries. Now personally, did that, did that motion cover the extension agreement?
She did, she handled it, yes. She did a good job.
And on item number seven, our agenda package review on policy and appointments for the town of Lake Voltaire Board, I think everything is the same last week with the exception of added job descriptions of both the boards, which look appropriate to me. Any council questions, comments, concerns about that board?
That's correct, that's, the only thing I did is I, you know, took the, that part, left that part in, you know, and highlighted it. We do have an opening on the council record, and two applications have been submitted. Greg's reviewing them now and communicating with these people, they should be at next month's meeting, so for an interruption.
Is that time of application process, is it closed? Can someone still stand?
Well, I'm sure someone could still apply. I was going to have Heather close it off the website by the end of the week, just because Greg already had two applications with the one, you know, for the one seat, so, yeah.
I think that's still consistent with our existing, you did at least three days.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Yeah, it's been more than that, yeah.
Oh, it's been more than that, yes.
And you had partners, comments, concerns, council?
There.
Do we have a motion to approve the change on the policies, the appointments for town of Lake Voltaire Board?
So, Lou?
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Or a motion, or a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those aye. They said aye. And following our agenda, comments from Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just one new thing, but I'll run through the list of things I updated you about last week. I know we've heard some comments from the public about the in custody death that happened with Mr. Hansley, he passed away, and involving our police department and the sheriff's department responding to a domestic call there. Just, again, it's, it's under investigation with the FBI, which is common practice in these types of situations. They don't have a specific timeline for their completion of that investigation and submitting that to the DA's office. Our police chief has been in constant communication with them, providing the information they're requesting as they complete their investigation. So we hope that'll obviously be done sooner than later. I also share that we have claim open with our carrier, and the event is in civil litigation on this. And then our police officers who involved with the incident, one is returned to work and the other one, you know, soon will be returning as well, once they're medically cleared. I've got the chief here, if you had any other questions about it, relative to the status of that review or investigation. Questions to you? The other thing I mentioned, one of the other things, the annexation, Michael Uplow from Furley Charter School had inquired about the town considering and what the process was for satellite annexation out at their satellite campus on Old Hendersonville Road. And I've reached out to him to see if he'd be available, if he's still interested in to come and talk to you all before you would submit some formal application on that, it's roughly a three month process. I hadn't heard back from him, but just wanted to let you all know, I reached back out to Michael. Yeah, kind of reverse here, and there's a different topic, de-annexation, which you don't see very often, but we did have, I did receive an inquiry from property owner out at 326 Flynn Branch, which is one of our few satellite properties, or satellite parcels, if you will, that are, that are residential. Most of the satellite parcels that ran into the town are commercial use, but it's a residence, and I just got confirmation, I, our understanding, I just would confirm that, about the process that someone wants to be considered, you have to get a bill introduced in the general assembly, and obviously that bill passed for that to happen. I did let the property owner know that, and I'd also mentioned that, you know, hadn't heard anything as far as the position or input back from council, but I, you know, would talk to you all if there was, you don't have to take a position on it, but if you did have some comments, obviously, should this happen, they would no longer receive town services, you'd lose some tax revenue, property tax revenue, or if they were de-annexed. It is pretty uncommon for that to happen, and that, although there was some concern expressed last week about a precedent that that would set. So I don't know if you had any comments, or you want to think about that, or feel free to email me, or if you want to discuss that now, or...
Anything else, council?
I just think it could stand against residents. That would open up other issues from other people that I don't think we'd want to deal with.
I don't think it should be that big of an issue because they are so remote. It's not like you're taking a whole lot of, again, you know, a complete area, there's just, nobody else on Flynn Branch, and it's something else that it would say next weekend with, or, you know, to your acquaintance, and if they don't cancel, but I don't have a problem with that, I just hate that it sounded like such a long run out legislative process to be able to do that. If it wasn't so remotely removed from everything else, I would feel like I opted in.
So how do you feel about these others, the ones that are up there across from Smiley's, which are very small, all the ones up there? I mean, that's, if we lose all of it, if everybody else's solid suit, that would be a huge tax loss for them.
Well, I just felt like this was a different situation, given the fact that it was put in place for a county council member at the very beginning of incorporation. I just felt like that was a different situation, but it's a problem, you know, for everybody, but it's fine. I just thought it was so odd for it to, they were out there, just one home there.
It was odd to have happened in the first place, I'll agree with that.
Yeah, so, but that's my feeling, so I just, I don't have an issue doing it.
What is the other property that's over there near it? Does that have a park building or something?
No, it's, oh, I forget the name of the road, it's off of Jackson.
It was so small, but I was not...
It was similar to, what about, somewhat similar, I wasn't, way before my time, so I was going back to what he's already, but my understanding is they were a former public works employee, and they petitioned the town about, and it was so they could get garbage collection out there. That's my understanding of what happened, but I, I'm not sure.
And then most folks would be happy to pay just twenty dollar a month or something, and after earning dollars, pick up their basic tax. Yeah, I thought that was really odd.
Well, I'm a little bit concerned with the precedent too, but it sounds like it's ultimately our legislators' hands.
Yeah, and I've given the property owner that information, you know, who our state representative, the state senator is, that, you know, if they want to contact them and do that, I did caution them, I don't, I would imagine they'd ask at some point, or they may not, you know, councils, you know, any position on it, because then it could become a controversial local bill, and just sometimes those get, they don't sail through, or something like that in the general assembly.
A lot of the time, that precedent as well, but it sounds like it's ultimately among all of us, our legislators.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we would have to submit the bill to the legislators, wouldn't we?
My understanding is you go, I think that all the, the only clarification we got from school government is a local bill has to be introduced, so I don't know, you know, unless the bill draft in office and the legislators' office comes back to us and says it needs to come from the town of Fletcher, you know, then we'll deal with that, but my understanding is it could either come from us or the property owner trying to get that introduced. So I'll, I mean, I'll let them know that, and I don't know if they'll follow through.
And when you talk to them, tell them that there's, you know, some people on council that are questioning whether that's a precedence that the town wants to take.
Yeah. The extension of service with MSD, I, you know, we, you've had some discussion about possible use of our American Rescue Plan phones or ARP phones, look at uncertain areas of Fletcher as far as sewer, sanitary sewer, and to get some idea, well, number one, if MSD would do this, and secondly, what might be the cost involved, I sent an email to their engineer with MSD, and I got a response back, and I was looking at Westfeld Road, North Hudson, and one other street off of there, sorry, the last one's escaping.
So you had two different maps, but they were all included in that same plan?
Yeah, and so it was, yeah, North, North Hudson, Westfeld, and...
I'll try to remember myself.
Yeah, it's the next street parallel to North Hudson, and they basically, and we already knew, I knew there was no sewer on North Hudson and on Westfeld, and so they ran some numbers to determine like a per linear foot cost of extending sewer on those roads, and it was in excess of six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that was not including if they had to tear off the road, you know, if there was a sewer extension on the road, and any additional right of way acquisition that would be necessary.
Dogwood.
Yes, Dogwood Terrace, thank you. I did a blue line across the street here, and I was on Earth, I mean it, yeah, so Dogwood Terrace, North Hudson, and Westfeld, and they're all in close proximity off of Fanning Bridge Road, right there, you know, where I'm talking about. And, you know, Westfeld, there's been some historical interest in sewer there. So he came back with a ballpark estimate, and kind of the next steps, if you will, from here, as I was going to talk to their, I've sent you the email, it's passed a little bit this week, to their person who coordinates basically projects like this, doesn't necessarily do all the quantifying of the costs on it, but coordination of sewer extension projects, and they talk about, you know, there's interest in this, but what if the residents on the road don't all want sewer in there, and, you know, there's, there's a cost to tap on, you know, if they bring sewer through there, and so there's, you know, is it going to be worth it to bring sewer to a street where maybe you get only half the people that want to tap on, and will MSD do it if that's the case, and, you know, those are, those are some things that need to work through if, if you want to continue to pursue that as a potential project, and, you know, getting better numbers on it, knowing who would want to participate in that. So I just remind them, kind of set that ball in motion, and as soon as I get a better feel for those things, I'll report back to you on it, unless there's any questions right now.
I know it's important that Grand Law with the sewers, talking about, they've had issues for a long time.
Yeah, there's a bunch of, I think, yeah, there's a bunch of subject kind of issues where they've just had really challenging things. Yeah, there's a bunch of subject type issues where they've just had really challenging things. And, you know, as you know, a former council member, he part of his property and a lot of the others. And there's just some long history of why didn't sewer get brought to those areas back when it was first brought to Fletcher. And that's a long story, but, so as soon as I get some idea back and kind of work it through those, I'll report back. If anything else comes up, let me know. And just the last thing I was gonna mention, just reminder, LGCCA is coming up on the nineteenth at three. So, beginning of June. Christine Miller.
Any other additions from council?
Just one thing. I was just looking back over the notes and I know you mentioned that the chief wanted to address anything. Did she care? I was looking at the three items that Ms. Kemp mentioned and I have a feeling you could probably address the bottom hands at least. If you wouldn't be on addressing some of that because I know you probably got further back to measures coming forward.
Certainly.
That would be nice to know.
I'll do the best I can. Good evening. Sure, I appreciate Ms. Kemp taking the time to be here, to speak her mind and share her perspective. And it's kind of our system works and it's, it's a good thing. So, I appreciate, I appreciate what she has to say. There's gonna be a few comments I can try to address as best I can remember. She did ask about some of our training, de-escalation training. And I can tell you that I remember the police department minus our head assistant, had de-escalation training and had mental ill training this way. So, less than two months ago, the entire department had that training. Of course, that time's a little train, so that in itself isn't enough. We have to continue to stay current with those type of topics. I remember that fourth. Crisis intervention training, we added that to our career development plan some time ago. We discussed that here. That is certainly, I believe she alluded to that training way as well. That certainly is very popular, very important training that we push all of our people to get to. Certainly, probably hasn't had yet due to staffing issues and such, but that's Department Career Development Plan is something that we want all of our officers to attend. Reference to body worn cameras that she has referred to, I, I, she has very, very good perspective, very good points on that. And I support, for the most part, everything she said. I stood before you, I believe it was last September, to talk about body worn cameras and, and I, I did not recommend them at the time and at various reasons. Those reasons still stand. They're still very valid reasons. If you recall, I said that I didn't recommend them at, at that moment and because I thought we'd give minimum benefit for maximum cost. But I thought within two or three years, we might have to revisit body worn cameras. And I support getting them, not because of this incident. It's not this incident that's pushing me to say, no, we need body worn cameras. Because there's a lot of, there was a lot of evidence and a lot of recordings and a lot of different videos, particularly this incident, this recent incident with Mr. Hansley. So, when they're done with the investigation, I don't believe there's really much left to the imagination as far as what to place. But as, as I look at our technology that we do have, it's getting older, it's getting outdated. And it is important, as Ms. Kemp referred to, that we do have recordings and we have the capability of recording those interactions. It serves both safety, officers will serve both the safety of our citizens. And so, that is very important. As I monitor the entire cameras that we have, and I try to monitor them on a monthly basis sometimes, sometimes it shouldn't be, but we have technological glitches and sometimes they're not working and because they're such outdated technology, getting them in place, getting them fixed has started to become a little problematic. And so, I do believe we need to update our equipment and it would make no sense to update our equipment and not move into the body worn camera area. I've already discussed that prior, this has been simple with Mr. Hansley with the manager. So, that's something I already have eyes on for next budget year. And I've already asked Captain Teiers to start looking at for assistance with that. So, I support. She has to say she very, very valid points and it's something as a police department, we need to, we need to work towards. Obviously, this is a tragic event with Mr. Hansley for being a fairly new police chief here at Town of Fletcher. Certainly not something you want to have to deal with. It's one of those things that, you know, the hope never happens to you and we can never say that won't happen here because we know that's not true. These things do happen. It's the nature of the world, the world we live in. And certainly tragic specifically for the family, for Mrs. Hansley and then those children. I certainly feel for them. She did leave a comment about this man, Mr. Hansley dying at the hands of these officers. You know, I think we withhold judgment on that until the investigation is complete, the SBI investigation. Because I, I don't necessarily believe that to be the case. This gentleman, Mr. Hansley, had numerous opportunities to change the outcome. And when I say numerous, I meant numerous. Officers went out of their way to try to de-escalate, tried to counter and explain to him why he was there. He was intending to interfere with his wife leaving and the officer won't stop. And why does it take several officers to do that? Because that's what it took to control. Two hard officers fought him for ten minutes and they've been in a street fight. Ten minutes is a long time. Two officers fought him for ten minutes and third officer showed up, still couldn't get control. Eventually, they were able to get him down, but they still couldn't give him handcuffs and it took more officers to give him handcuffs. And so, we need to, I don't have all the details. I'm starting to gather a lot of the information on my own. The SBI is not giving me the details at this point, but I'm able to gather and continue the investigation internally. So, you know, every day I'm getting a little bit more as to what took place. You know, as a demonstration, these are my handcuffs here. And if anybody doesn't want to believe me, want to know, it's a council meeting today and anyone wants to accept my challenge, my challenge is to put me in these handcuffs. But here are the rules. I'm not gonna voluntarily comply. I'm gonna resist. That means I'm not gonna let you put me in these handcuffs. And you gotta do it peacefully. And you can't end it. And you can't put me on my stomach. And not one person will be on top of me. Who wants to take that challenge? Who thinks they can do it? The mayor here is probably in better shape than the rest of us here not to call anything else. So, I don't know if the mayor wants to try, but it ain't gonna happen. But that's what we expect our officers to do. Pull a hat, pull a rabbit out of a hat. That's our reason. It's a tragedy. I wish it would happen. I feel terrible for the family, but we need to reserve judgment until they finish with their investigation. I'll take any other questions about that here.
She, she mentioned a good comment about, are there any procedures or can we put procedures in place that if, if the police are dealing with a suspected drug suspect, that we go ahead and call fire or medical personnel?
Um, yeah, typically you would ask them to stage until other things were resolved and he was under control. If you thought it was going that way, yes. As far as a procedure, a practice, I think very wise procedure, very wise practice. It's something that we often do. We did not do it in this case that I'm aware of until it was too late. But that is certainly a, a practice that does happen from time to time.
Sheriff's Department, I know that they have body cams. And so, have you talked to Sheriff Irvin about the possibility of maybe going the route that they have in place now or?
As far as body cams?
Yeah.
Uh, well, as I stated, I definitely think we have to move that direction. So, I definitely think we need to work towards getting them. Absolutely. And I support that. Again, she has kept it. Excellent points on that. And so, we need to do that. They, we looked at their manufacturer. The manufacturer is a good manufacturer. Obviously, we probably have to put out for business stuff and try to get the best we can, but I definitely think we need to start working on getting that taken care of.
Would body cams replace the ink card cam?
Uh, yes, basically, but then you'll still get out of the car. The ink card cam will still function, but that would be your sole microphone. So, that would pick up, because of the car, it'll also pick up, you know, what you're seeing from there.
I really, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I really appreciate you taking the time to address what you came up about compromising the SBI investigation.
You're welcome. It's, it's a terrible thing. And I hate to have to stand here and, and pretty much on a daily basis, I have to deal with this in some respects or look at something regarding this. Certainly not fun. It's one of those things we wish would never happen, but unfortunately, sometimes we can deal with these.
That's my one comment, kind of question. Well, obviously, a tragedy would happen. Nevertheless, I sat down with the fault, oh, and I also, I would like to say body cams, you moved them pretty quickly. But I sat down with the fault that safe life, and I know you all interact with them just a whole lot. And I sat with the executive director. She held you very high regard. I thank you for that. I thank you for that partnership that you all cultivated, the fault of safe life. For council, safe life's a nonprofit and a kind of broad description of, they deal with fault with different domestic issues. That, and...
Your child used domestic violence, sexual assault, those types of things.
Yeah. And she mentioned, I guess, a contract that you all signed in December. And I'm sorry, my language is poor. I can't quite remember what exactly it is, but I think it had to do with the benefits that you all received. Yes, I guess from my understanding is it's added on to effect because of the, a holdup with the DOJ? State DOJ from my understanding?
I'm sure that's accurate. I'm sorry. Bears. We have bears. All the officers were getting bears. So, we were at the scene, maybe domestic violence type of situation, more or less for children, you know, to give them something to hang on to. So, we all have those records. Yeah. There is a new, a new program, a new family assessment program? Is it a new family assessment program?
Yes, and I believe that the officers would do the survey and the survey would immediately go to the fault of safe life.
You'd use it with bears?
I'm sorry. I thought that was a lady too.
Bears, bears are pretty simple. You can give, you can give the kid a bear.
Yeah, the, the way she branched, like, oh, yeah, this is a part of the program. Okay, anyway, that's great. I'm really interested in the survey portion of it. And it, it actually has been held up currently by the state DOJ.
Well, I didn't know it was being held up. Actually, I think we have a, we have a meeting this week. But basically, the theory behind it has been tested elsewhere. Is when the officers are on scene, then we conduct an interview. This, this interview is basically high risk factors. And if they meet so many points, meaning that they're high risk, we're supposed to call safe life immediately and try to connect them immediately rather than just handing them pamphlets saying, hey, you need help, call safe life. Us going back and following they call safe life. We're actually, we're supposed to make that connection immediately. So, they offer services, shows or stuff like that. It's based on research that is done that shows the type of factors that mean especially might be downside. And so, if there, those factors, that score is getting high, then they must take action immediately. So, that's the LAP program, the family assessment program that's referred to.
Yeah. And I wanted to bring that up because I was thrilled to hear that that contract was signed, but a little bit disappointing. Everyone just seems to recognize all of the, the executive director there. If it isn't held up to see if we can do anything on the council. They pushed on forward.
Yeah, we're supposed to, uh, we're supposed to try to, we're supposed to start very pretty quickly. And I hadn't heard about the whole, that, that we're supposed to meet this week. So, maybe I'll hear about that, hear what the status is.
Well, I certainly like to, instead of pushing that forward because I'm very excited to hear about that. And I'm sure council is, what?
Safe life is a very good program. They're very good people. And they, they actually offered assist, they did. They, you know, offered Mrs. Hansley a kind of a show, try to, you know, get her whatever else they could, counseling, et cetera. So, they were part of that.
What do we, what does the Town of Fletcher have available to our officers? If they're in a situation where they, they believe there's some kind of mental health issue? Do they have, I mean, is, they have to deal with it themselves or there's nobody they can call at the time or?
No, we're, we have a, a crisis center. Local crisis will come out. Others via health, the county will oversee the mental health in the county or in this region or the state. And so, they can get, you have people that can come out and we use them quite frequently. You know, somebody might be suicidal or something like that and they'll come out and help.
So, are those social workers?
Yeah, local crisis.
Okay.
We'll call them and then, you know, we'll, we'll summarize what we're dealing with, what we're folding. We'll decide whether it's something handled with the phone or when they respond, in person, or those type of people. So, yeah, we've been using them for years. And so, that's, it's fairly routine.
And while we were talking about body cams, is it my understanding that the state is the one that dictates how and what can be released to the public and so on?
Yes, there's, there are pretty specific street laws regarding this.
Has to be petitioned and also judged. The right one to judge and decide if it's released or not. Thank you, Mark G. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Any other business for council? Seeing none, we have a muscle for adjournment. We have a muscle for adjournment. We have a second.
Second.
A motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those available for adjournments, say aye. Those opposed?